Hello everyone, welcome to the City of Pikeville's Commissioners Report. I'm Homer Owens with East Kentucky Broadcasting and with me is City Commissioner Jimmy Carter.
Good morning Homer, how are you today?
Fine, how are you?
Great, good to be here again.
You've got a lot of information for us, I hope?
I hope we do.
We'll find out, I'm ready to go if you are. The city approving a rate study contractor for water and sewage. Why is that necessary at this point?
Well Homer, it's been several years since we've done a rate study and we just want to make sure this doesn't mean that anything's going to be raised or anything like that, but we just need to see where we're at as far as our rates or where they need to be to pay for itself. As you know, the city and water, or the water and sewage rather, has to be self-sustaining. It can't come out of the general fund, it has to pay for itself. So we have to make sure that we're balancing out every year.
There are things that happen, there's a dynamic in the department, in the city, where some debts are paid off, other debts are incurred, new residents come in, it all affects the rate.
Exactly, and as you know, we've expanded our sewer lines and we picked up some additional water lines from Mountain Water and Sandy Valley Water rather, down close to the Florida County line. So we had to go out and replace a lot of lines, we had a lot of capital invested, so we just need to make sure that what rates we're charging those people that we can come out and break even, that's what the process is.
When this study is concluded, first, how long will it take?
It'll take several weeks, two or three months probably to gather all the information. It's very time-consuming to make sure we get the numbers right.
Is this a case of crunching the numbers or will it be public input for this Jimmy?
It's just crunching numbers based on past histories of usage and the new customers and the customer count that we have.
What is the condition of the Pikeville infrastructure as it relates to water and sewer?
Very good, I mean in the past two or three years, we've spent several million dollars on new sewer lines, new water lines. I think we're going to have a state of the city after this presentation, and I think Donovan's going to hit on some of those dollars that have been spent. With the growth that we're experiencing right now, with both residential and commercial, we saw a need a year or two ago to start moving forward to make sure our infrastructure was in good shape.
When you figure out this rate study and apply it to the rates actually paid by residents, does Marion's Branch property play into it since there was some improvement there?
I doubt that it'll be very much on that right now, just because we don't have any income coming in there, although there is lines going to there. The rest of the infrastructure has not been put in place yet. I'm sure that'll be, it has to have some kind of bearing because we know that we're going to have to spend that money to go up there and put water lines and sewer lines into those residential lots. So yes, I'm sure there'll be some, but I'm not sure how that's going to play out.
Would that also apply to the Thompson Road project? The improvements in that location?
We've already, those improvements have already been completed, so when that shopping center comes to be, and hopefully we'll be turning some dirt here in the spring, most of all that infrastructure's already in place and ready to go.
Are tenants, have they been selected for that project, Thompson Road?
I think the developer has gotten several tenants signed, I don't know what those are right now, they kept trying to keep that under the cuff, but my understanding is 70 to 80 percent of the stores have been leased or have pending contracts to lease.
We're taping on a Thursday this week, the previous Monday the commission met, so the audience needs to keep in mind those time relationships as we go through these comments. I see that on Monday night at the commission meeting, you had a proclamation honoring the Pikeville High School golf team?
We did, and I made a note of that during the meeting, that it's been a great year for the high school, the junior high and the elementary school in their sports and academics. You know, we've had the girls' basketball team in, football team, this week we had the golf team which were region champions this year, and a lot of other accolades that they had a great year. And we also had the boys' basketball team in for winning the 59th district, or not 59th, but the Pikeville Invitational Tournament, which I didn't understand was the second oldest tournament in the state.
I believe it's been running something like 54 years or something in that neighborhood. I can remember back when I was a little younger.
So you played the inaugural game, is that what you're talking about?
I played in it, I don't know if it was the first one or not. The waste tire market development crumb rubber grant application, let's not identify it anymore. What's happening there, a $24,000 grant, and will that help the Randy Jones Memorial Park?
Well, not really to the park, but to the soccer complex.
I see.
What this does, and this is the third year that we've applied for this grant, what it does is you add the crumb rubber, kind of like the astroturf at the high school field, you add that in with the grass, and it makes it a lot better playing field, makes the grass adhere better and grow better, and it keeps them moisturizing in the summertime, believe it or not, to help that grass grow.
Does that involve a collection of tires and send them to a processing plant somewhere?
This is a company that comes and gets throughout the region or the area, I don't know exactly where they're based, but there's a couple of companies that do this, take used tires, old tires, break them up and use it for this process.
One of the things going on in Frankfurt Jimmy, this is of course a 60-day session of the General Assembly, we're waiting and it may have occurred after this taping, it's that close to happening, so keep in mind the time change as we go through this. The U-Pike being included into the state system, you've told us in the past that that is going to make a huge difference for the City of Pikeville?
Oh absolutely, and I heard some numbers about increased enrollment within a couple of years, and they were looking at possibly 2,000 to 3,000 students in a couple of years if that does happen. I mean, you know, think about, you know, all the activity that's going on downtown now with the, what, 1,600 or so students, 1,700 what they have today. So you can imagine what that's going to, it's going to change the dynamics of downtown for sure.
And it's going to make a ready market for housing? Will the City of Pikeville be engaging in that process?
We're helping out the college a little bit, we're going to be hopefully selling some property down on Ochsere Avenue, the vacant lot that's there that goes against the boulevard, there's some, it's called the Honors Housing, that will be hopefully starting this spring, I'm not sure exactly how many units are going to be there. These are for single mothers that have children, that couldn't find housing, that'd be able to go to school, and it's a whole process of daycare, everything, it'll be a great thing.
And placing that in the mind of the audience that's just across from Hardee's?
Correct.
In the area of where Old High Street entered onto the boulevard?
Correct, yes.
Let's talk for a moment about the new hotel that will eventually be built in the Elm Street, Hambley Boulevard area. I was surprised to hear at the meeting on Monday, the city signed a quit-claim deed. Did we own that, we being the city?
Well what we did, it was basically a property change. The footprint of the new hotel took a little bit over Hatcher Court, and they're going to have to close the back portion of Hatcher Court, which doesn't affect any residents. But what happened, the Bailey Hotels too, if you'll notice there's an alleyway there, he had a parking lot there down closer to the park, that will be an entrance way going in and out of Hatcher Court now, where it used to be a parking lot, so he dated that to us, we gave him a small portion.
And the entrance of that is where now?
It's between Minnie Sue Elliott's house on College Street and the CPA office right beside there, there was a parking lot there they used with the Hampton, that will be a street now, so we just kind of switched properties there.
And the hotel, when it finally takes shape, will be an L structure, there will be an addition to the existing Hampton?
Correct, it will actually attach to the old Hampton and then go up to Elm Street and stops at College Street.
That just shows your remark there, just how fast we're moving, the old Hampton.
The old Hampton.
And it's only a couple of years old, three at the most I think. What else have we got on the agenda that happened on Monday night? Linda Aine, A-I-N, was hired by the City of Pikeville?
Yes, we keep her on retainer year to year, and this is just one of those yearly things.
She is an attorney?
She is an attorney, that helps us with Pike TV, helps us with the cable, that's her specialty to make sure that we're getting our biggest bang for our buck for our cable.
And we're in the process now of considering contractors and providers for cable in the City of Pikeville, is that true?
No, I think the county's working on that.
For the county?
The county, the city, we did ours about a year or two ago, so we've got several years to go before we start that process.
That contract lasts for about 10 years?
Yes.
All right, give me your impression from Jimmy Carter's point of view of what happened in the City of Pikeville for last year.
Well, when Donovan gave his state of the city report on Monday, it was kind of overwhelming, to be honest with you Homer, I don't want to take any thunder from him, he's going to be coming up right after this, but you forget about a lot of the projects that we do throughout the year, and when you go through and list them each and every one, it's a huge list. I'm very proud of all the accomplishments that we made this year, and I hope the citizens are too.
It's amazing that the city commissioners, Donovan, Mayor, Justice, able to keep everything on track, keep everything moving as smoothly as possible. I'm sure you meet some challenges in that area.
Oh absolutely, and you know, we don't always agree, it may look like we do, but we always come to a common ground when we're meeting and doing our work sessions, and I think that's what moves the process along a little bit. We all see the big picture and what we need to do to get things done and make sure it gets done.
How pleased are you on a personal level with the city right now? Are you comfortable with it?
Absolutely, oh, it's just mere words really, I can't express, I guess my biggest thing is when people come into town that haven't been here for several years, and they see the difference. A lot of times we're in a situation that, you know, we've got the blinders on, we're here all the time, we don't see a lot of the changes because they happen slowly and progressively over a period of time. But when people come in and visit, or people that haven't been here in several years, it's very nice to hear those words that they have.
I have to agree with you, I live here in the city, and I'm very proud of what's going on, I don't deal with it in much detail as you and other commissioners, the mayor and manager, but it is becoming, and has been, a wonderful place to live, and you can feel the tension that is going on in the city, and it's a positive thing.
Thank you Homer, we really appreciate it, and I really appreciate doing what I do, and I just hope everybody else does too.
All right, anything else Jimmy, if you can think of, this program has gone exceedingly fast.
It really has, a little shorter than normal, so we can get into Donovan's program about all the projects that's happened over this year, but again, I just hope everybody's in the city and really excited about our future and where we're going, and hopefully we can continue that.
Hope so, I've enjoyed this, let's get together again soon.
Sounds good.
Okay, in a recent work session, Donovan Blackburn, the city manager, reminded everyone of the activity in the City of Pikeville for 2011, let's take a look at that.
Okay, again, welcome, this is the year-end review, this is January 9, 2012. The intent today is to give the commission an update of all the projects through 2012. I think what you'll find is through the 2012 year that we had a banner year. Over the last eight years now that I've been doing this, we have, this commission has moved this city forward in many different ways, but as I reflect back upon 2011, going into 2012, again, it has been a very unique year for accomplishments. There's been a lot of things that has transpired over the last year, and still a lot of projects that we're going to move into. So what I've done for you, as I have in the past, is I have segregated the different projects by category, and I'm going to go through these relatively fairly quickly. I would ask if any of the members of the mayor, if you were the commission, have any input or any questions, let me know, and I'll have to repeat them back because we've only got one microphone today. First of all, in talking about utilities, you know, as the commission's aware, over the past several years, we have worked on different funding packages to bring several utility projects forward. 2011 however, was the year that we actually started most of the projects, and Jack and Jody's here with us, they were very instrumental involved in not only helping with the funding, but also in overseeing and getting these projects moving and going. But again, some of these projects, the funding came about in 2009, 2010, but the actual project, either construction start or completion, was in 2011. So as you can see by this list that I'll announce, we had quite a bit going on. First of all, we had the Mullen Sewer Project, which is about a $1.2 million project, in the neighborhood, close to almost 100 percent participation, had almost 100 homes in that project, so that was a good project. We had Marion's Branch Sewer Project, as the commission's aware, that's a project that we could have very easily, the commission could have decided to go on US 23 to bring sewer to the Marion's Branch industrial and housing development, but instead decided to work inter-cooperatively in a sense with the county to bring sewer to the Island Creek area. You know, Island Creek, as you know, the tributary coming out of Island Creek was riddled with straight pipes, and in order to provide not only a better quality of life for those residents, but also to bring the sewer through to the project, it increased the cost of the project, but we were able to again to work across city-county lines with the county to bring a $5.5 million project, at the completion it'll have close to 400 homes and mobile homes that have been hooked up, whether trailer parks or individual homes. So that was a $5.5 million project that we are closing on. The US 23 water line replacement, again, this was a million dollar water line replacement, taking out an asbestos line that was buried 14, 16 feet deep for US 23 through coal run. This obviously is the main line that provides that sector of the county water within the city's 201 service area, so again, that was a million dollar project. Lichens Creek and Billups Lane, which is currently going on as we speak, that's a little over $800,000 project, again, 100-plus homes. Penn Friends Sewer was a $130,000 project, again, that started this year. So in totality, for utility projects alone this year, what we will close out is about $8.2 million in utility projects, searing well over, close to 600 homes. And we also, in the sense of utilities, we just finalized, matter of fact, received back from PSC this week, a sign-off on our extension on our wholesale water contract. Again, working with Mountain Water District, we took a contract that we had with Mountain Water, it was an initial five-year contract, we had two years left on the contract, we extended it for three additional years, so now we have again a five-year contract, which was beneficial to both parties. We kept the price, our wholesale water rate, the same as it was under the five-year term, so it allowed, it put Mountain Water in a good position, to put the city in a good position, knowing that we have a five-year commitment. We completed a $25,000 study with Avon and Melton on our sewer plant. We actually, the first meeting in February, we will have a, come together with the commission a work session to talk about what our plans are with the sewer plant. We had, we adopted regulations regarding our commercial trash service. We also started our new residential trash can program this year, or in 2011. We also received a grant and created an open with UMG, our recycling center for cardboard, which was a major undertaking. If you haven't been out to the transfer station, that building is completed out there and somewhat impressive. So again, your total utilities, as you can see, over almost, close to $8.5 million in various projects, a lot of that was brought in by grants, and so it's been a very aggressive, proactive year. Under economic development, obviously, we have been labeled by the Kentucky League of Cities as a city of growth. If you look at the economic development and growth throughout the city over the 2011 year, it's been again staggering, and we've played a role, the city commission, and the city's played a role in a lot of the growth that you see within not just the downtown area, but some of the outlining areas also. First of all, we annexed 491 acres at Buckley's Creek, which if you look at, again, in totality over the last five years, the areas that we've annexed with Buckley's Creek, Marion's Branch, Harmon's Branch where the airport is, Lichens Creek, Penn Friends and Sword Fork, we've been able to grow the landmass of the city by about a third. But again, and again, understanding that what I'm covering today only entails 2011, and we can go back further in utility projects and many other things, but again, the intent is just to talk about the year-end review of 2011. We settled our court case with Coal Run on the annexation on the North Mill and the Airport project this past year. Marion's Branch Development Advisory Board was formed to work upon, on the working development plan. We included the county, the county judge, Judge Ruthford is part of that committee, Development Advisory Board. We also signed an agreement with the University of Kentucky, doing a low-energy study as part of the Marion's Branch development in 2011. The city sold property to the potters, paving the way for the new housing development that's currently going on down at Cedar. Justice Wade was developed, that was a million dollar project done by the City of Pikeville that opened, putting utilities, but also paved the way for Texas Roadhouse to come in, and also signing an agreement with Texas Roadhouse, building in their facility, which they've had a banner opening. But it also allowed us to, by leveraging the million dollars through the rent that we generated and occupational tax we generated from Texas Roadhouse, we were able to invest another $600,000 in utilities and infrastructure, which has allowed us to work with Realty Link on this up-and-coming $30 million retail development. As a matter of fact, we announced several weeks ago, our letter of intent between us and Realty Link, Neil Wilson was present during the meeting. What we're waiting on currently is for the post office to, for us to finalize our deal in the post office. I actually heard back from the post office today, that the letter of intent that was submitted is acceptable, they're polishing up some language in it, and we'll be ready to move forward through the due diligence period. So hopefully over the next four months, they'll be through their due diligence, and we'll be able to finalize the sign-off on the project. So again, in basis of what was in the agreement, they have verbally accepted, which is a great announcement. But again, moving forward on the Texas Roadhouse million dollar investment, which paved the way for this other retail development to come about, so that's undertaking. The city played a major role in the issuance of the bonds, we worked with the university and also the hospital for the issuance of the hospital improvement and the refunding revenue series 2011 bonds. As you know, the commission was a conduit to make that project a reality, in essence, bonding $150 million for the hospital to move forward. We did the same thing with the University of Pikeville for the Pikeville Medical School, again issuing the 2011 series bonds in the amount of $26 million to make the new medical school a reality. There was also an agreement signed last year between ourselves and the New Hilton Gardens with Bailey Hotel 2 is the name of the company I think that they're going under, for the construction of the new hotel. And signing that agreement, currently the utilities have been put into place, easements have been signed, agreements have been signed, and construction, if you've seen over the past several weeks, has started to mobilize, the utilities is currently undergoing. So having a 120-some-room facility, Hilton Garden coming with a restaurant, they will be paying everything from occupational tax, the bed tax, the restaurant tax, parking fees, which will generate also the opportunity for the convention, the Expo Center to host small conventions. We signed a working agreement between the city, the airport and the Chamber, working towards commercial air service, we signed an LOI. Also, the city received a $750,000 grant for the application of commercial air service, and we're, we worked with our current legislators to try, unilaterally with the Chamber and the airport, and I have had several meetings with County Judge Ruthford to move forward with this initiative. We also created a new board for the new up-and-coming Scholar House and accepted a letter of intent from the Scholar House with the intent of developing the Scholar House to support both the technical and the University of Pikeville. We filed a lawsuit against the EPA last year against coal mining permits, and then our sister city from An Kong, China, visited the city in April of 2011. So under economic development, everything from development to dollars invested in infrastructure for the medical school, the hospital, the university, all this has been vast in the sense changing the landscape of not only the city, but the entire region. Under arts and entertainment, quality of life, one of the biggest things that took place in 2011 was the takeover by the City of the East Kentucky Expo Center. I would like to invite at this time Steve St. John to the podium. One of the things that the city did with also the takeover of the Expo Center is we also signed an agreement with SMG, of which Steve St. John will share some of those numbers. Steve?
Thank you very much, I'd like to start off with thanking this commission, the mayor and the city manager for this opportunity to formulate this partnership in running the Expo Center for the city now and the region. To give you a report on what happened in this past year of 2011, we had major ticketed events in Miranda Lambert, Barney, TNA Wrestling, Newsboys, Tim McGraw, Big &amp; Rich, we had Invasion, Billy Currington, Barnum Bailey Circus, Darius Rudker, Lady Antebellum, Avenged Sevenfold, and Landau Eugene Murphy. So we had a pretty good year. Tracking event days of which, the number of days of which the Expo Center was in use this year as opposed to 2010. 2010 we had 140 event days, and 2011 we had 175 event days. Number of performances, this is whenever we have multiple activities going on in the building. 2010 we had 151, this year we had 228. Attendance, 2010, 157,000, this year we had 191,000. So things are looking up at the Expo Center, we appreciate your support and working with you.
Steve, thank you very much, and as you can see, the Expo Center's had a dramatic, not only improvement in the venues, in the venue itself and the quality of acts that it's been bringing in, but also to the economic prosperity to the region. When the city decided to take this initiative on, the commission understood the importance of the Expo Center and what it played to not just the City of Pikeville, but to the entire region, and through the influx of the capital, the dollars and the revenue to keep the thing operational, it has had a very, very successful year. We also, 2011, another thing that changed with the Expo Center was, is that through cooperative effort between the county and the city, the composite of the actual Expo Board was changed, given the city, the mayor the right to make two appointments, of which myself and JR Blackburn has been appointed from the city to that board. So the board now is composite of two members city, two members county, three members by the state of Kentucky, by the governor. The girls' U-Pike basketball program, the boys' program was already in the Expo, the girls' program had moved into, and again, these are things directly related to just what the city has negotiated. As Steve mentioned, all the other things that has came forth, SMG and Mr. St. John has done a wonderful job expanding the venue and bringing those quality of acts to our community. Again, in 2011, the city implemented the restaurant tax, we, the city withdrew from the county tourism, thus setting up the city tourism, of which myself as the chair and Jesse Bowlin was named to the director of tourism. The city has forged a remarkable relationship between the city tourism and county tourism, we're working on multiple projects together for the greater good of not just the City of Pikeville, but for the entire region, and this has turned out to be just a very dynamic theme for our community. As a matter of fact, the county tourism is finalizing their move into the Hampton Inn tomorrow. The city's website was created, and here in just a moment I'm going to be talking, I'm going to turn the mic over to Jesse Bowlin, but the city tourism website was created. The city moved into the Expo Center, which we now have a tourism commission in the Expo Center there in the lobby, six days a week, we have it staffed, and again utilized existing resources, utilizing SMG staff to do that for us. Agreement was made with Food City in 2011 to do the movie night in the park, the speaker system was installed for the many events that we have downtown, and one of the big announcements was of course in 2011, was the agreement signed between Jenny Wiley Indoor Drama Association, or sorry, Theater Association for the indoor theater in the City of Pikeville. The building committee has selected an architect in 2011, actually right before this meeting tonight, I just spent about an hour and a half on a conference call with the architectural firm out of New York, and within the next couple of weeks we'll have a contract for them to actually start to design, and we're actually looking at the building phase of this kicking off somewhere probably around May or June of this year. So that was a major announcement, and will change the landscape of downtown. What I'd like to do right now is again, is one of the changes in 2011 was Jesse Bowlin being promoted to the position of the director of tourism. Jesse, if you would. Jesse, if you would.
Thank you, Donovan. And I stand excited before you today, the, first, I want to really appreciate the opportunity to tell you about tourism, where we're, what we're doing and where we're going. So I appreciate that opportunity from the commission. It's been a great experience for me and my history and definitely here in the community. The first thing we've done this year was, as you can see on the screen behind me, and I'll talk a little bit and try not to shield it, we created a tourism logo with the city of Pikeville. We mimic the logo after the state of Kentucky, which ranked fourth in the nation. So we're proud to have that as our official logo. We also moved into the office, the lobby of the Expo Center. That was really instrumental, and Steve's staff at SMG and the Expo Center are actually serving out front. He has two ladies that we use out front for the kind of face of tourism inside the lobby. The website is complete and operational. We've developed that through a local guy here in town. Duane Stevens built that website for us. It's www-visitpikeville.com. We've also created social media, we're expanding in that area. We understand that at the end of this year, that's one of the number one marketing tools in America. So we've created a Facebook page for Pikeville City Tourism. And then we've also created a toll-free number. So we have a toll-free number now for tourism, for anyone outside our region can dial this number. It rings right into the lobby, the front desk of the Expo Center. Couple other things that we've done this year with the development of the website is a calendar of events. This calendar of events is, it's very multifunctional, it's very in-depth, it carries direct links for like Ticketmaster if you're attending an event at the expo. It carries a map, GPS coordinates, so that way if you have GPS in your vehicle, it gives you the coordinates on the map and you can just punch those in and it'll bring you right here. It also labels the cost of these venues that take place at the expo, not only there, but also out in the community if there's other events, such as what will be hopefully, you know, soon, the Jenny Wiley Theater and things like that. We've also joined Team Kentucky Sports Authority. That is a mass marketing group that handles things all over the state. They help bring in regional conferences, sports, they promote all over the country. We have become a member of the Southeast Kentucky Chamber. We feel that it's important to definitely join local forces, and they are very instrumental in things that's taking place in tourism on our end. We have several other things that we've done in the lobby. As you can see here, we've formed a partnership, and what we've done is we've been able to showcase autographed guitars for any artist or musician that comes into the expo that performs an event. And so we have those on display inside the lobby. We've also are making use of the sign located behind the lobby desk. That is something that we want to, for personal greetings to the community, for anybody coming in outside and so forth, and informational purposes to the public. Next, we have opened in 2011, a gift shop in the lobby. Currently, we carry Friends of Coal merchandise and East Kentucky Drillers. Some of Steve's staff, again, here was very instrumental in getting this going, getting, making sure that the material was set up in the lobby and that the tourism, we bought the pieces so that we can display all this for the community. The lobby, again, as I said, is open six days a week, so from nine to five, that merchandise is available to anybody in the community. And there will be more additional pieces added to that, such as Muscle on Main t-shirts, Cut Through Adventure t-shirts, things that we have that we want the public to be able to get to at ease. Next, we outside, we put a location marker sign right off Main Street. It's a LED lit sign. It's very bright and it has the capability of also being able to showcase venues with a little sliding piece and insert. And Stephen and we talked about that at the movement of it. Next, I want to give a little recap on 2011. We were very, very beneficial in 2011, and I was very happy to see how the events took place in the city and the route they're going. Everything seems to be growing from that perspective. We have, you got the award-winning event Muscle on Main, that's turned into one of the hottest events here in the city and community and region. We've been able to expand that, going to a, this year in 2011, we went to a two-day event, making it more of a tourism point of interest. So that way, we have block parties on Friday night, which we visit local businesses and restaurants throughout the city in order to bring in people in those directions. So we look forward to carrying that over this year. Other events we have, of course, is the Hillbilly Days, second event, second largest festival in the state of Kentucky that we look forward to working with. We have movie nights in the park, which Donovan had mentioned, the partnership with Food City on those and county tourism. And then we have Nightmare on Main Street, which has become a popular event in the city and the community this year in 2011. I think when Steve and I were discussing it, a good number wise was 7,500, I believe, or something, 7,000, something at a time. So that was the key words there, so we really look forward to it.
The city commission went wireless with the new iPads. The city launched our online tax payment services, allowing different organizations to pay online for their taxes. The city also launched a security file system for scanning of all documents. The city upgraded the website, making transparency our top priority for the community and for the city, putting ordinances, minutes, and all of our bills now online for the general public to view at any time. Again, the transparency initiative, the city also launched a new city commission report and city manager's report on Pike TV. Downtown projects, the Main Street facade program unveiled itself with projects at Anderson's Department Store, Case Law Offices, and several others. A new wayfinding signage program was installed downtown, along with the new population signs, making it easier for pedestrians and traffic to move around the city where destination locations are. The Four Street Swinging Bridge went through reconditioning and all planks were replaced. Personnel changes, Tanya Taylor was brought in as the, officially taken over in January last year as the city's finance director. The finance department and the accounts payable department was split, allowing the finance department to manage the city's $30 million budget, and Rebecca Hamilton named as the director of utilities, because obviously over the last several years, utility department has grown substantially. Kristi Biltour was named as a full-time city clerk. We just heard from Sean Cochran, who was hired and brought in as the director of events and attractions. Jesse Bowlin was promoted to the position of city tourism director. Melanie Stevens was brought in as the city's first grant administrator. The city generating over a million dollars in various grants. Some of those grants were the 2011 recycling grant program. We were awarded $33,000. The Kentucky League of Cities Grant Program for $6,000. The Kentucky Pier, we were given six hours of consultant pay. Land and Water Conservation Act, we generated $60,000, as was announced, for the new horse riding area. We received a $1,000 charity grant, the $35,000, or actually $40 some thousand grant for the generator that was aforementioned, that was in the grant funds. Recreation Trails Grant up at Bob Amos was applied for. 2011 Kentucky Homeland Security Grant for $14,000 for the generator for the floodgate. The National Trust Preservation Fund, $1,500. The FEMA mitigation grant project, again, $180,000, and that was for the emergency warning system. Small Communities Air Commercial Grant for $750,000, $3,000 in FEMA public assistance, $125,000, actually $300,000 in various coal severance projects. So the city generated about $1.1 million in additional grants, just through the city applying for the grants through the new grant administrator, and those are dollars that the city would not have received if we had not applied for. We, let's see, Sam Rogers was also, Samantha, who is my administrative assistant, was also reclassified also as the director of Artisan Center, creating a partnership, reestablishing the Artisan Center program downtown. The commission adopted a resolution naming downtown Pikeville as a cultural district. And then, again, the cooperation, cooperative effort in working with the Artisan Center and the city in the new Paint the Bear project that was announced and will be unveiled later in this, in 2012. In 2011 accomplishments, some major accomplishments was, of course, myself, the city manager was awarded the East Kentucky Leadership Public Official of the Year. I was named to the Kentucky League of Cities Executive Board. We were the first city that the Kentucky League of Cities City Magazine posted as one of the most progressive cities in the state of Kentucky. Pikeville was presented and won the Enterprise City Award in 2011. Commissioner Dallas Lane was named as Aquanion of the Year. And of course, the Pikeville Fire Department participated and done very, very well in the World Combat Challenge, finishing 40th. There is, in your packets, there are several organizations that were also involved outside of just the normal city manager's tasks that either myself or one of my staff is involved in. We are participants, as Jesse mentioned earlier, on the Hillbilly Christmas in July Event Committee, the KLC's Insurance Board, the Kentucky School Insurance Board, the Kentucky League of Cities Premium Insurance Board, the members of the KLCIS Claims Committee, member of the Kentucky League of Cities Classification Committee, the KLC Legislative Research Committee, the Kentucky League of Cities Executive Board Member, National League of Cities Economic Development Congressional Board, Pike TV Executive Board, Pike County Justice Center Planning Development Board, East Kentucky Corporate Board, Marion's, a member of the Marion's Branch Advisory Board, Pikeville City Tourism Convention Board, the Building Committee for Jenny Wiley Theater, and a member of the Pikeville Scholar House Board. Those are all boards that I participate on, and some of those boards, either members of you as the commission participate on, or some of the staff here participates on. That concludes the 2011 update. As in closing, if you were to, again, look at it as in its totality, you can see that the landscape of the city of Pikeville has changed drastically. Everything from, again, Jenny Wiley Theater to the Expo Center, to the building of the medical school, to the building of the hospital, to $8 million worth of infrastructure, to the upgrades at Bob Amos Park. We didn't, there was a lot of things we didn't cover here today, things like new ordinance changes that have better helped protect our citizens, additional grants and other funding that we have gone after on other various projects. What I tried to do today, and I will mention that we are probably a week or two away from our audit being released, which I feel very confident will be another good audit here. So again, if you look at the city's tax base, our projects continue to grow, our tax base continues to grow, the landscape continues to change, the overall quality of life continues to improve. And one of the things that we're working with Summit Engineering on going into the 2012 season is an update to the city's comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan was completed in 2005, where over 90% of that plan has been completed. This commission has taken that plan very seriously and has put every effort and energy, a bit of energy into making sure that we're focused and that we're driven by those items that were on the plan. And if you go back and look at the comprehensive plan and look at the accomplishments of 2011, you'll notice that they mirror very well together. Again, I would, in closing, say that it's been a very, very, very successful year for the city commission and your vision and your hard work and insight for this progressive community. And we've been recognized, not just throughout the state of Kentucky, but also on a national level, at the accomplishments of Pikeville and Eastern Kentucky. So very proud to be part of that and appreciate the efforts and energy that goes into making Pikeville a quality community as it is today. I would ask if there's any member of the commission, if there are any comments that you would like to say, please come forward. I'd like to introduce Mayor Frank Justice to address the commission.
Donovan, I'd just like to represent the commission here and tell you, that's a wonderful job, wonderful presentation, and we fully appreciate everything that you and your staff does for his community. You go beyond the call of duty. I know that, I know the people's trying to hire you away from us, you could have gone for a lot more money, but you sit here and you serve your community, and we appreciate that, this community appreciates that, this commission appreciates that. Everybody that gave a report here tonight, we appreciate what you're doing, you're doing a great job. There's certainly diversification in our city for people that wants to stay here and be entertained, or have an opportunity to go to school now, or have a job here, they can stay in Pikeville, Kentucky, and that's the direction we're going. I'm looking forward, Jack, to our comprehensive plan so we can tackle new projects. I know that we've been quite successful in your last comprehensive plan and in our success in that. Donovan, I guess when you opened up this talk here, you thanked the county, and I'd just like to point out a few things. All these projects that you see is not possible without our representatives. You've got Representative Collins, Representative Hall, and especially Representative Leslie Combs here in our community, that just, we're not successful folks without these people and their support. You've got Senator Ray Jones that's sitting here just at it, you know, you're beck and call while you need. We know this community on a local level better than anybody in the state or whatever knows that. And these folks go and they fight for us and they bring money. Certainly Congressman Rogers and his staff is there. And the county has just been a terrific bunch to work with. The $5 million project on Island Creek, you know, Magistrate Chick Johnson has always, you know, been right there with us, working on that project. Certainly Judge Wayne Rutherford has helped us, you know, projects going on down in the Mullins Edition, what's forth. Magistrate Henderson has been right there wanting those projects completed, and we've got them completed for them. And I hope everybody's satisfied, we appreciate serving this community, and I hope it's been a successful year for you all, and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, very much for those, for those comments. It's very elegantly put, and I know it's a, it's a great privilege to work with this commission and your vision and your foresight. So is there any other comments?
I have one comment.
Commissioner Lane? Would introduce Commissioner Dallas Lane to the podium.
You know what? I think Mayor has passed all our feelings on to our city manager. And when I look at all that's been done, when I look at what's been done in the 12 years that, when I finished this year, it's been done, it makes me proud to be a part of this. You know, I really, when I think about it, I don't feel like that, how many times will you run into a guy like this? He's smart, he's intelligent. And to get, to be, to, I think he's responsible. He had a lot of help, but he has a way of bringing people together and getting things done. In my many years in business experience, which is 45 years, I've never run into a guy like him. I'd like to have him on some of the projects that I've worked on. Congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner Lane, I greatly appreciate that. It's a passion of love for our community, and it's the reason that each one of us are here around this table. And it's whether you're serving your community in the official capacity, or, Jack, the many years as her engineer, or Donnie with UMG and other affiliations prior to that, we do this for the love of our community, and I think we've been very successful. Anybody else before we close out? Commissioner Davis? Commissioner Gene Davis?
I'll be real short. As you can tell, I've been around a long time. And I don't even remember being on a city commission that's worked as hard and been more diligent than this bunch. I started out, I don't even remember when I ran the first time, '83 maybe? I got on, back on in '89, I've been on ever since. And I don't, I consider it a privilege to be a city commissioner. I would do it for nothing, which is almost what I do it for. But that's, that's all I want to say. I'm just glad to work with these, the mayor and the commissioners, but also the city employees.
Amen.
And that's not even counting UMG. UMG, I think they do a great job. And I don't know, they, they keep the city going in wintertime. Every time I wake up, I thought, or go to bed, they talk about six inches of snow tonight or whatever. I think, never fear, UMG is here. Thank you.
Thank you again, Commissioner Davis. Before we close out, anybody else? Okay. Well, Commissioner Carter and Commissioner Chaney is following up with their Pike TV show that, that has been airing, and they've done a wonderful job communicating to the, to the community, all the wonderful work that this commission has done. And in closing, my comment is, is that 2011 was a successful year. I do look forward to 2012. For those that, that are able to partake in these meetings, the commission meetings, I can honestly say that not, you all don't always have the same ideals, you all don't always have the same conclusion, but you do have the same heart, and that's the progression of the city of Pikeville. And because of that, things get done. So it's been a pleasure again for 2011's accomplishments. I look very forward to 2012. Thank you, everyone.